Welcome, everybody, to the study session of the private side of the school board. For information, Director Ackerson will be joining us at some point remotely. Order seven, seven o'clock. Start then with the public forum. This is a fifteen-minute period of time set aside for the board to receive citizen input. Keep your time to three minutes, that would be great, we appreciate it. First speaker is Mary. Mary Ann, you're up.
Thank you so much for having me. My name is Mary Ann Van De Vosse, born and raised in Holland, Michigan amongst a lot of tulips and Dutch names. So, that's the explanation for that last name. I've come before you tonight because I'm very concerned about Prior Lakes, Savage Prior Lake, I live in Savage, so I want to say Savage Prior Lake School System, and your support online for transgender and LGBTQ students. I have seven grandchildren, and one of them is gay and another one is trans, and I worry about how they would feel if they went to school in the Savage Prior Lake School District. I'm so encouraged by what your official policies say, that I would feel comfortable in having them go to school in this school district. One of them, my great-granddaughter, is getting her master's degree in education, and I wondered how I would feel if she applied for a position to work in this school district. And I was somewhat concerned that not all school board members seem to be on board with the policies of the school board. So, if I'm wrong about that, please let me know, but I am concerned about that and how comfortable she would feel presenting herself as a teacher in this district. Do you have any questions of me, or want to make any responses? Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you. Next speaker is Amber Fisher.
Hi, my name's Amber Fisher. I've lived in Prior Lake six years now. I have a kiddo at Ola de Lago, she'll be in first grade. I moved here specifically for the school districts. I pay a very large amount of property taxes to live here because of the schools. We stayed because of the schools, and I am really struggling to see on how we're going to keep our kids safe in first grade next year, much less teach them with twenty-seven kids per class at Ola de Lago. So, I'm trying to better understand the plan. As I know, safety in education is a top priority, however, I've gotten zero insight into what that's going to look like. In fact, no one at the school has even made a public announcement about it. This is all secondhand information at this point. So, A, get ahead of it. As someone who is a president of a business in this community, the fact this is not common knowledge at this point is concerning to me, but B, what's the plan? And I'm asking for answers today, but soon it would be great, as I need to consider my child's safety and well-being, as well as her education living in Prior Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker this evening is Dustin Smith.
Good evening, thank you for having me. Before I begin my public comment, I wanted to offer my congratulations and thank Dan Edwards, who I don't think has left us yet, but is not here tonight, so I'll be sure to do that at another point in time. Dr. Thomas, Chair White, and Directors of the Board, my name is Dustin Smith, and I am a parent of two children entering kindergarten next year. Like many parents, I received the email on May 12th notifying families that proposed changes for the district. As a former student of Westwood, there was a personal disappointment to seeing this school on the list. My personal feelings aside, the plan as proposed and to be discussed this evening make a great deal of sense, and addresses many of the financial challenges that have been discussed. Though I can appreciate the actions required at this time, I cannot help but find myself a little frustrated as to why we find ourselves in this current state. While I could go through them one by one, I don't want to spend my precious three minutes going through each financial challenge. But the fact is, the recommendations brought forth tonight will only result in nothing more than buying us a little time. Instead, I would rather focus on our response to the situation. The financial hardships that we face are not going away, so we can continue to cut, and cut, and keep cutting until there's nothing left, or we can acknowledge that what we have on our hands is not an expense problem, it is a revenue problem. I will concede that the situation is undeniably far more complex than my statement would have you believe. Declining enrollments, state funding issues, mandates, inflation, okay, I did go through them one by one, but these realities are not going to change overnight. No one is going to fix this for us, so the question must be, what are we going to do to offer our help and support? How do we respond as a community? Like the situation itself, the answer to it is just as nuanced. I believe that means voting for elected officials that take education seriously, and advocating for our legislative agenda at the Capitol, but it also means asking ourselves what do we value as a community. Our friends, our neighbors, and loved ones should be proud to be part of this amazing community who value and support each other. I know that I was proud when I went to Westwood. I want my children to be proud to be part of this community as well. I'm hopeful that they will be, but we have to give them a reason to be proud. I believe in order to achieve this, our children need to be assured that they are part of this community, and that their priorities and needs are giving them the opportunity to succeed. Thank you for your time this evening, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the purpose and agenda, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair White, Board Directors. So, tonight, we've got quite a heavy agenda. We have a couple of superintendent reports, one that was stayed over from our last business meeting. We will go over some recommendations around facility use fees, athletic fees, activities, et cetera. We will go through our preliminary budget review, which we can bring you all through to date, and then we will go over our monthly financials, and then this month, there are additional documents because of the timing of when we had cuts from the last business meeting. We don't want to wait until June to take those, so we've added those together to go over those tonight in your packet. And then, we'll have an enrollment update, and also the conversation around school closure, consolidation recommendations, and then you'll all talk a little about the timeline of the link coming to you all for my end-of-year evaluation, and then we'll have a series of policies to be discussed, and then close meeting for negotiation strategy. So, quite a lot to try to accomplish tonight.
All right, thank you. Then we'll move right into the superintendent's report. Dr. Thomas.
Thank you again, and so, I'm going to just recognize Ann Pham tonight. We recognized her last week, or at our last business meeting, but unfortunately, had a conflict and was not able to be there that evening, so we wanted to make sure that we have our proper way of acknowledging you in person, and just let you know how much we appreciate your leadership perspective here on the board, as well as other committees out in our community, and being kind of that representative for students at the high school and throughout as well. You've done an amazing job, and we're very proud to have you, and we are also very proud as you take on your next steps in life and going off to college and pursuing whatever is going to make you happy. So, we're excited for that. So, we have an appreciation here for you, and then also, we have a certificate of appreciation as well, thanking you for your year of service here with us, so, great job, really well done.
Dusty, did you want to do a snap, a quick?
Chair White, can I ask a question?
You may.
Dr. Thomas mentioned college, can you share where you're going? Is it a big secret? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm curious.
It's okay, it's definitely not a secret. I'm going to the U of M Twin Cities, and I'll be studying international relations.
Good for you.
Yeah, I'm really excited. So, yeah, can I move on to my student council report?
Actually, wait, is that okay? Just lie there, go ahead, go for it.
Okay, okay, I'll start with the school report. Of course, we just had our prom last Saturday, so thank you to senior class committee, everyone had a lot of fun, and you did a great job. Our student advisory group mural project is finally starting up, and we're seeing it getting painted in the media center, so if you have time when that is done, go check it out. Again, it's in the media center, and I'm really excited to see how that turns out. It's another great year for spring sports. I'd like to highlight our girls' track and field team for setting a new school record, and another big shout-out to Speech, who just sent eleven students to nationals with everyone placing at least one category. And I'm also happy to report that our NHS Miles of Strength 5K ended up raising just over $4,000 that will go to supporting families suffering from childhood leukemia. So, yeah, we're finishing the year off strong at PLHS. In regards to student council, I'm happy to report that our spring events are up and running. This year, we brought back our Paint Wars event just last week, and we had a lot of student participation, so that was really exciting. We also have a lot of events this week. A new one that we're doing is Mental Health Awareness Week, or Wellness Week, and we're just doing a bunch of nice things for the student body, such as bringing in therapy dogs on Wednesday, and doing a gift giveaway on Friday, all with the goal of better educating our school on the importance of mental health. So, all proceeds will be donated to Duck Cup Memorial, a local mental health awareness organization that's focused on opening up conversations, stopping the stigma, and basically preventing the consequences of neglected mental health before they even happen. So, yeah, we also just had our executive elections and general elections, so we have a list for our new student council next year. I just want to congratulate the following students on their new positions. We have Obi Osuji as our new president, Amelia Joswak as vice president, Tristan Bartosevic as treasurer, Natalie Mahold as secretary, Sophia Hauser as historian, Haley Haferman as delegate-at-large, and Justin Borg as our parliamentarian. So, yeah, hopefully you'll be hearing more of those names in the future. And lastly, I just want to thank everyone here. Members of the board, thank you for letting me observe and listen in on all your insights, and see how you bring voices in the community into these conversations and decisions. Administrative directors, thank you for all the work you do to make sure everything runs smoothly, and for giving me a taste of all the complicated numbers and figures that go into running a district. And lastly, Dr. Thomas, I have you to thank most of all. Thank you for guiding me through everything school board-related, and showing me what it is to be a great leader. I truly admire all the work you do. You truly do have the best students, the students' best interest at heart, and it shows in everything you do. And thank you to Ms. Walls, and everyone else at the district office. This has been such an enlightening experience. I've learned so many things here that I would not get anywhere else, and the things that I've been able to bring back to the high school and, like, student council, it bleeds everywhere. So, yeah, thank you again. And all year, you might have just seen me sitting here quietly staring into your souls as you talk, but trust me, I've gained a lot, and I know the school's gained a lot from it too, so, it's been wonderful serving as your student representative, and I'm excited to see what the student rep does next year with you guys.
All right, thank you. You may.
I just want to say thank you for all your participation. Student voice is very important, and to have yours be part of the board, it has been wonderful having you sit on the board and engage in conversation and share your reports month after month, so, wishing you all the best in what's next. Yeah, thanks, Ann.
Thank you very much.
You're not leaving. You have to stay through the summer, did they not tell you that?
Oops. Missed that memo.
Okay, we'll move on to the major magnitude field trip reports, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair White, Board of Directors. This is just a report when we did Policy 610 last May. One of the things that we caught as part of the practice is to share the report at the end of each school year, so, I'm just sharing with you all the major magnitude, both international and domestic, for your awareness, per Policy 610. And those are typical trips that are five hundred-plus miles, and/or have an overnight to them, so before you, it's just a list of the trips, and for the international ones, we typically come back and do a report out on those. So, that's all I was sharing, more of it as a report per Policy 610.
Okay, any questions? All right, moving on, we have no proclamations this evening, so we'll move on to oversight of operations. And first off, we have a facility use fee recommendation, Director Dahl.
Thank you, Chair White, Dr. Thomas, and Board Directors. I also have Gina Fern with me, who's our facility use coordinator for the district, so if you have any questions, she's going to be your go-to for the answers. In your board packet, you'll see a document with a cover, as well as our current year facility use fees and priorities, and our proposed facility use fees and priorities for the 25-26 school year. This is an annual review of fees. Typically, we only do an increase about every two to three years, so we don't raise them annually. And the reason we try to do that about every two to three years is so that we can keep the increases slightly lower. If we waited longer than that, you're going to see a larger increase, which clearly impacts those who utilize our district facilities. So, this year, we're proposing a 5% increase on all rental fees across the board. The last increase like this was in the 21-22 school year. Last, I think it was last year, or two years ago, that we increased the pool?
Pool was last year.
Last year, so we had an increase just to our pool and turf rentals last year. Biggest reasons for that is the additional costs that are involved in those facilities, chemicals, all of those things that go into the pool, so we needed to make an adjustment for those, but we didn't touch any of the other fees since 21-22. The reasons for raising fees is clearly increased cost in operations of our facilities, and it's typically recommended to do this as part of our budget review each year. In addition to the increase in fees, we also added a priority level, which is something we don't typically do every year, but after reviewing our four priorities, we made a decision to add a fifth priority level, which essentially just separates out for-profit and nonprofit businesses, organizations that are out of district. So, if they're coming into our district to rent one of our facilities, they used to be grouped into one priority level, and we're splitting that into two to separate out again our nonprofit from our for-profit businesses. So, with that, those are our proposed increases for this next school year, and then typically, you wouldn't see this again for another two years. You'll see the fees just as an annual review, but not an ask for an increase unless something drastically changes. Questions for us?
Are there any questions? Director Olson.
Yes, excuse me, a couple, just for my benefit. The two gym categories, if you will, or facilities, are the differences between those just a matter of size and capacity?
Yes, correct.
Figured, thank you. And then, I wondered if there was kind of an example of a priority five, since that is, I know there's a description here, which is very helpful, but if, do you have an, sorry to put you on the spot, but since that's a new priority?
So, priority five is typically for-profit businesses, it can be anywhere from private dance companies to, say, we have some business come in and want to do a education, or not an education thing, but they want to do something for their employees, like a staff training. Most of them that fall into that are going to be, like I said, more dance recitals. We do have some martial arts that come in and use the facilities, and those are for-profit businesses. Nonprofit, the reason we kind of separated that out, we do have some interest from, like, Special Olympics and different things, so this would kind of keep those two a little more separate of what they are.
Great, thank you, those are my questions, appreciate it.
Mary, go ahead.
As I'm looking at this, I was wondering, do you have a percentage breakdown of where the revenue came from, from the different priorities last time?
So, the bulk of our user groups, probably eighty percent fall in that priority two, which is our community. Our community is definitely the biggest user of our facilities. We do have some priority three and four based on the last, but the bulk of it is probably priority two.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any idea of projected additional revenue based on typical use, or?
Did you put the projected in there?
No.
I mean, ballpark, if I was just curious.
Well, right now, so we're projecting for this current fiscal year around 283,000, so I would say if you take 5%, if you take about eighty percent of that, times 5%, that's about what you're looking at for an increase. Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, this will be an action item on June 9th, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is athletics and activities fee recommendation, Director Marshall.
Hi, good evening Superintendent Dr. Thomas, Board Chair White, and School Board Directors. I'm here to present to you the Activities Department proposed budget adjustments for the 2025-26 school year to help with the current budget shortfall in the district. Specifically, if you, in the board book, there should be some slides that you have access to. Currently, after revenue, the district's general fund contributes about $850,000 total to the entire Activities and Athletic Department. Given that dollar amount, we're in a very unique situation, I think, where there's not a lot that we can cut, but we have the ability to potentially generate additional revenue, to be able to help offset some of the budget shortfall that does exist. Before I get to that, the very first slide, I just want to share, and this is really just an FYI for all of you here, there's a link in there that's a stipend breakdown that compares the stipends for the ten different schools within the South Suburban Conference. If you look closely at that, you'll notice that all of our stipends are well below the average of the South Suburban Conference currently. I know that there's some contract negotiations that are coming up, and while it would be very, very hard for the current athletic and activities budget to be able to absorb any sort of increase within those stipends, it is important to note that we are losing good candidates, losing current activity advisors and coaches to other districts. It'd be very hard for them to come out and flat-out say it is because of this, but I will tell you right now that this is certainly one of the reasons why that is happening. So, again, to me, it's just an awareness for all of you to have in terms of where we're at in terms of the stipend piece. At one point, it was pulled out of the teacher contract, and it's done separately, but in my four years here, we haven't seen an increase at all with that piece, so, again, just an awareness. But, being able to switch over and chat a little bit about the revenue, for the Activities Department, there's really two areas of focus on where this can occur. The first area that I'm going to focus on is by increasing our participation fees. There are four spreadsheets that are in there. They talk about registration numbers, or participation fees and registration numbers for activities, fall sports, winter sports, and spring sports, and that's broken down for this current year. In each of those spreadsheets, you can see what the actual revenue was, as well as what the current participation fee is, and you can also see what I am proposing for the new participation fee, what the difference is between the proposal and the current, and how much additional revenue is anticipated to come in. I think it's important to note that across the board, these increased participation rates that are being proposed will mirror what the current highest rates are in the South Suburban Conference. The current highest rates are pretty much between Lakeville and/or Farmington in terms of participation rates. The one exception to that is in the world of hockey. I am not proposing an increase for boys' and girls' hockey, because we are already currently $75 more than what any other district is charging within the South Suburban Conference. Most of our rates would increase between $20 and $80 per season. Additionally, we would also look to eliminate our family maximum payment amounts, as other districts either don't have this, or are currently moving away from it as well. By increasing these participation rates to those that we are proposing, we will see approximately $150,000 in increased revenue. A couple of things to make sure that we do note with this, we do scholarship students who are not able to afford participation rates. Typically, we do ask our students to pay a minimum of $25, so that there's at least a certain amount of accountability that comes with being able to pay to be able to participate, but we will never and have never turned people away from participation in athletics and activities due to financial difficulty at all. So, that will certainly continue on as well, too. The other area of focus for increased revenue is with our gate or admission receipts. You can see in the next spreadsheet how much revenue we received from our gate receipts during the 23-24 school year. I do want to point out that this number fluctuates every year based on the number of home games we have for each sport, what the matchups are, the weather, the day of the week that the games are played on, there's so many factors that come into play when we do look at this. Additionally, on the spreadsheet, you can see approximately how many tickets were sold for each one of those events. We are proposing an average increase of $2 per ticket, which would generate an additional $75,000 approximately for the year. Currently, we charge $8 for adults and $6 for students and senior citizens. We are proposing that we move this to a flat rate of $9 for everyone. The reason for this, first of all, Farmington is doing something very similar to this. By moving over to an online ticketing system, the online ticketing system does not have the ability to distinguish when you're buying a ticket between who is an adult and who is a student. Therefore, as you can imagine, by moving to an online platform, we've seen a rather large increase in students attending games when they come through the gates, and that the adult ticket sales have gone down. So, again, moving to a flat rate is already happening with a lot of our playoffs that are run by the regions. It's a flat rate that's out there. Region 2AA is typically charging $10 as a flat rate at this point. We will continue to offer our Student Activity Pass. That Student Activity Pass is something that gets students into all events throughout the school year, which does include hockey, that's a rarity, because of many districts where the cities own the ice arenas, they don't allow student passes to happen, but our relationship with the Code of Ice and Fitness allows us to be able to use those down there, so students can get in there as well, too. So, the other thing that we do offer for everybody, adults included, is a punch pass. The punch pass currently, we'd be looking at selling those for $75, so it'd be an average of $7.50 per ticket by continuing on with those punch passes, and, which is an increase as well, too, but we've been able to see a number of those punch passes that are sold as well, too, to our families. So, again, between the two pieces that we are proposing, it would come out to be about $225,000 in additional revenue for the district.
Any questions for Jeff? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Would the Student Activity Pass, is there an increase proposed for that?
It is, they're currently $60, the proposed is, they'll go to $100 for that.
Jess.
Hey, Director Marshall, thank you for this. The one question I had with, you said hockey is already the highest in the conference. How is, is there such a thing as a cap, or how are those created?
Yeah, so, the interesting piece, having two sons who played hockey, I will tell you right now that paying the participation fee to play hockey at high school is far less than what you're paying when you're part of the Prior Lakes Savage Hockey Association, which, again, a big reason for that is because of the ice bills that do exist. So, we utilize a lease levy to be able to pay ice bills, you know, within the district, versus if you have a student who's playing hockey, you're paying monthly ice bills as part of that. So, to answer your question, though, Director Olson, there's really not a cap that does exist at all. You know, that dollar amount, this past year, we raised everything by $20 heading into this year, you know, and so previously, that amount was already the highest versus some of the other school districts that are out there.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Director Marshall, you're anticipating $225,000 in increased revenue. Any guess as to what you'll net, because you'll have, I'm assuming, increased costs?
You know, to be honest with you, I don't necessarily foresee any significant increased costs. You know, in terms of any sort of rental, the only piece that we look at renting would be the ice arena, which, again, is done through a lease levy, but paying our workers, you know, paying any sort of expenses that go along with the events, there shouldn't really be an increase at all in the additional expenses that come with that.
Okay. And then, the eliminating of the family maximum, as a parent in long lost days in the past who had three at once in high school activities, any idea what you're going to save by eliminating that, and, I mean, can you make a case for it being worth it? That's just, that's a tough nut when you've got two or three.
No, and I understand, and it's interesting, looking at the other districts, I mean, Burnsville has never had something like that in place. Lakeville's, the family maximum is $3,000. Lakeville's, the family maximum is three thousand right now, which is, which is very high, I think. Very similar to you there, Director White, I have, you know, a number of children who are, who are in sports, and, you know, I have reached, especially when you throw hockey in there, my family max has, has been hit even before I head into the spring season. And I think I, the part that I maybe struggle with a little bit the most on that is, I understand that, and by no means is my family, you know, financially well off. However, the same token, I feel like we have the ability to continue to be able to pay at that point. And again, knowing that more and more districts are moving away from that family max, I didn't figure out necessarily how much that would also be included in that increased revenue because it would also generate, you know, certainly an increased revenue piece. I will say, though, again, I'm going to go back to what I said before, and that is if a family comes to me and says, you know, we need, we need to be in spring sports, or we cannot continue to afford to pay for this, we're going to work with that family to make sure that they can participate.
All right, appreciate that. Charles?
You, you mentioned that the family coming to you, a lot of them won't. Is there a way that you can send that out a little prior to? Because I understand a lot of people's pride is probably not going to
Yep.
do that, so maybe just anticipating that. That would be one. Two, something I think, I think maybe you and I have discussed is going away from paper products at games. Is that still on the discussion point? And if so, is that going to save some costs? Has a decision been made? Or is it still in the process?
Yep. I'll address the first piece as well, too, just so.
Yeah.
The, the registration system that we use automatically ties to Infinite Campus, and so any student who receives free and reduced lunches, it's actually automatically put into the system that they're already getting the scholarship piece that's there. That being said, you know, there are going to be some families who maybe don't qualify for free and reduced lunch, who may need that assistance that's there as well, too. We will be glad to certainly promote that piece, you know, to let people know that it's obviously done, you know, it's, it's done in privacy, you know, where that contact is made to be able to reduce that fee. So without a doubt, that's a piece that we can, we can put out ahead of time. So it's interesting because many, many districts have moved strictly to, I'm going to start with the ticketing piece, have moved strictly to online ticketing, and we still offer a cash option. The number of people who come through the line, and I know Martha can attest to this, who appreciate the fact that we still offer the cash option is amazing. And it is a lot of grandparents who come through who like that ability to pay with cash. So very similar to the, to the programs, to the, the paper programs that we use, we're going to offer paper programs, but not the, not the number of paper programs that we've done before. So the idea is to slowly transition away from this. We'll have a QR code that people can scan that QR code to be able to bring up the program. If you've been to any of our theater performances, we're already doing that. You know, we've moved away from the paper for our theater ones. So with athletic events, we're going, the idea is to slowly transition that out. I don't think we can necessarily just quit cold turkey because we have a lot of people who'd be very upset about that. So, but yeah, the plan is to hopefully move, start moving away from that next year.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Just one more. You mentioned the activity fee for free and reduced lunch students, but what about like activity passes if they're unable to purchase for full price?
Same thing. Yep, we would, it's, it's, we use the same system when they go through and they sign up for that.
Okay.
So if they go through and buy that, it's actually already in the system as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this will be an action item on June ninth. Next on the agenda is the twenty-five, twenty-six preliminary budget review. Director Fredrickson.
Thank you, Chair White, Directors. There are several documents in your board packet of this study session. I think I will start with the cash flow report since that is the one related to this current year. There, you look at the cash flow report that we provided you two months ago, you'll see that the year-end projected expenditures were exceeding the year-end projected revenues by about one and a half million dollars. And we talked then that we were watching all of the expenditures, and we were making whatever reductions we could for kind of stopping any spending that was unnecessary. So now, two months later, the cash flow report will show that we are down to three, three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. So we've made significant progress in the last two months to reduce our expenditures to get closer to our budgeted amount. And again, we still have a couple of months left of the year, and we are still continuing to watch our expenses. Just a couple of things on the report. You'll see in September, there's an adjustment for two hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. That is actually an audit entry that's related to the twenty-three, twenty-four OPEB entry that we had to do manually. It did not get in the audit report. They will do a prior year adjustment at the end of the year, this year, to reflect that. So it's, again, it's related for the twenty-three, twenty-four, not twenty-four, twenty-five. The variance, you'll see in kind of the bottom part of the report that we're anticipating about six hundred thousand more in revenue than what our budget was, which is about a half a percent. And then we're looking at, or the annual forecast for expenditures is coming in about one point two million over the budget, but there was also a nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and eight dollar board-approved use of fund balance. So again, the variance on that is going to be about zero point five percent variance. So are there other questions? I can certainly answer them about this report.
Anyone have any? Mary, go ahead.
Director Fredrickson, I know one of the things that you were working on was the transportation that was causing much of the overages, the projected overages coming into the end of the year. Can you just give us an update on how that was resolved? I know that it had to do with field trips and extra, like surplus charges for, I believe, high-traffic times and a few other things. I'm just not quite sure how we resolved that and if that is going to be a continued, you know, process going into next year.
Yes, the activities buses, they transport kids to the events, and then they, students have to find their way home from those events. So that was how we cut out some of those costs. We are looking at, again, ways to cut costs for next year. I know we've talked about the RFP that we were doing for transportation. We cannot enforce an RFP for next year because we still have a contract for one more year with the bus company, but we will have an RFP going out probably in the fall of this year to start for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. But we are anticipating some of the same issues for next year that we had this year. And again, we're just trying to adjust those overages from the transportation. We're looking at other ways to make reductions, which so far, we've been able to do in other budgets.
One additional question. I assume that the reflection of moving men caps to the high school also reflects a reduction in transportation to and from the school to, to Lakeville.
There will be some savings there, yes.
All right. Any other questions as far as the cash flow report goes?
No, I think you answered all of them except just to confirm. So I mean, the three hundred and sixty-four K overage that we're forecasting right now, obviously, we still have cost-cutting measures in place. Do we anticipate we're able to close that gap at all further over the next two months?
We will certainly try, but again, it's a half a percent variance, but we are making every effort we can to save whatever dollars we can for the last couple of months of the year.
All right, moving on.
The next one, I think we'll talk about the forecast comparison. I think this has caused some confusion as we've gone through the process this year. So what I've shown you on the top is the original forecast that we did in October four, twenty twenty-four. And again, this was a forecast, so we were projecting what our revenue and expenses would look like. And you can see that our forecast for fiscal year twenty-five showed expenses of a hundred and twenty-two point eight million. The reality is, if you look at the expenses, our actual budget that was approved by this board, our expenses were a hundred and twenty-three point six. And according to the cash flow report that we just looked at, our actuals look like they're going to come in at about one twenty-four point nine. And then with the audit adjustment, we took that out, so there was about a million-dollar difference. So if we were to look at redoing that forecast, given what we know as actuals, the revenue for the forecast would be a hundred and twenty-one point one million, obviously, with the expenses at one twenty-four point nine, which is our actuals that we're projecting coming out for this year, and then build the inflationary factor, in this case, we're assuming two and a half percent. It varies between some of the payroll, some of the contracts. But if we increase that inflationary factor by two and a half percent, then our expenses actually would be one hundred and twenty-eight million, which is why we did a four point one million dollar reduction into next year's budget. I think we just had to adjust the starting point from the forecast that we had a year ago. So I think that's caused some confusion on what our starting point was and how we got to the projections that we have now. Are there questions about that?
Was the inflation, the numbers kind of don't add up for me when I, when I compared them, but was, I mean, was that two point five percent inflationary factor not in, in the forecast that you submitted last year?
There was an inflationary factor in the forecast, but the original forecast was way under what the actuals were. So if we go back and adjust the actual or the forecast to be what the actuals ended up being, so the forecast was under projected. So if we increase it to what we know is going to be the actuals and then apply that inflationary factor, then that's where we get to the hundred and twenty-eight million projected expenditures, which is why we cut the four point one million for next year's budget.
Anyone else as far, okay, move on.
I mean, I do still have several questions on like the differences in where the area, the categorical expense additions is. I guess, I don't know if we're going to get to that, but I guess, you know, when I just compared apples to apples, the forecast that was submitted from November to now in the expenses category specifically, it looked like most of those expenses were in special ed, which was like a two million dollar increase. And then I would say largely in the sites and buildings and the fiscal and fixed costs, which is two and a half million.
Yeah, so if you want to
Can we get specifics on what those expenses are for?
Sure. So if you want to look at the report in here that is comparison by program is one of the handouts in there. It's broken down by the different, for preliminary twenty-five, twenty-six budget, it shows the difference between the final approved budget from twenty-four, twenty-five. And you can see, like, for instance, the administration increased by two point three percent. And just let me remind you, in our budget document, I believe it's on page fourteen, it defines what is included in each of those categories. So administration is defined as principals and some academic directors, but it doesn't include like the business office, HR, some of those other directors. So it's specifically addressed for principals. So obviously, their salaries were increased, and that's that increase. All of the other ones, with the exception of special ed and the sites and buildings, have decreased, which is part of the four point one million dollars that was reduced in our budget. The special ed increase amounted to an eight, eight point two percent increase, and we didn't cut any position, any teacher positions in special education, and there was only three point five paraprofessionals. So all of those staff received a salary increase according to the negotiated contracts. So because you're not cutting staff in special ed, they've all got a salary increase, it's obviously going to make the special ed expenses increase over what it was for the twenty-four, twenty-five. And then the other one, the sites and buildings. So one of the things that we talked about last time was in the detailed allocation, we are using restricted revenue that we've already received. And that included the LTFM and capital outlay. So by taking those additional restricted revenues and putting them into the allocation for the LTFM and the capital, which both fall under the sites and buildings, it's increasing the amount of the allocated budget from twenty-five, twenty-six over twenty-four, twenty-five. So those were those increases. The fixed costs, the increase in that is actually the increase in our general liability insurance policies. Includes general liability, workers' comp, cybersecurity, all of our district insurance policies. So those were basically where all of the increases were, just in those couple of categories. Everything else was decreased with the four point five, or four point one million dollar reductions.
I, I still don't think we're getting kind of the detail I'm looking for on the sites and buildings. So, you know, the October, November forecast was like around nine million. It's now ten point four for that specifically, despite, you know, probably five hundred thousand dollars or close to it in cuts that we've made. So I mean, we're, we're increasing that budget by like one point nine million dollars, and I, I'm just trying to understand, like, did we pull things out of LTFM? Or what are, what are we trying to, what did we prioritize there? Is it things that have to be done that we didn't, we weren't aware of, or?
Oh, the LTFM, the, the board approved that ten-year LTFM plan. There's still all of the things that they put in for the projected projects. And then there's also a pay-as-you-go that we're also allowed to use for LTFM, and that typically has been around four hundred fifty, five hundred thousand dollars for pay-as-you-go. So those are things that you don't really anticipate as a set project. They're usually between a hundred thousand and less than two million dollars that things come up as you may have to do something that you hadn't put in the ten-year plan, so you do use pay-as-you-go. And it's kind of the same that we've been doing for the past several years. Everything in that LTFM is included in that ten-year plan with the exception of those pay-as-you-go.
Yeah, it's just not explaining the, the large difference, I guess, in the, over the last five months, right? I mean, one point nine million dollars, I don't understand where that came from, so.
We also, last year, underspent some of those LTFM projects. We didn't do all of them that we thought we were going to do, partly because we had some other issues the year before when we had to, the road construction on the road between the middle schools, so we had to drain the pools, and, and we ended up doing some of that pool maintenance then. So then we had to make up for it the next year by not spending quite as much because you're allowed to pre-spend your LTFM dollars, but you have to make it up somewhere. So as we reduce this current year by some of those that we overspent the year before, now we're putting back the amount that LTF, it's, we get an allocation, it's categorical funds. We're allowed to spend the allocation that we get, and it's all formula-based. So what we built back into that budget is the revenue that we're anticipating getting plus the carryover that we had talked about from the reserve restricted revenue.
And is there a reason that isn't being considered to use for the pool still?
Well, the restricted revenue is one-time money.
Right.
Once you spend it, it's gone. And if we had used it for the pool, it wouldn't have been sustainable because once you use it, it's gone, and we still have all of those it, it's gone and we still have all of those other expenses that we have to apply to the pool, all the chemicals, all of the cleaning, everything that goes into the pool maintenance. It would not be sustainable into the future.
Mary?
Just as a curiosity, when you talk about the pay-as-you-go, I know we've heard that term, but we also heard about the replacement of the boiler, HVAC and all that. Was that taken out of the pay-as-you-go? Because I know those were pretty big expenses. And we've got some that we know are going to have to be done. Is that what you're referring to or is there other pay-as-you-go?
Some of that money did go towards... Director Franz, members of the board, some of that money did go towards things like the boiler replacement. Some of it came out of the funds that were held back from last year's spending. So it's a little bit of both.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Charles, yes.
Director Fredrickson, can you lead me to how you came up with the original forecast and how it was so far off?
It's, I guess so far off is in my relative...
Then that might not be the correct verbiage.
Yeah. It's one and a half percent difference from what the original one was. And again, you're doing a forecast essentially at least two, three years in advance. So you're looking at what you know at the time. And because we're kind of work on, especially in the fall, we're working on three different years, we're kind of closing out one year, so you don't necessarily know what the final final numbers are going to be till that audit's complete. And then you're looking at the current year and then trying to build the next year's budget plus a forecast moving forward. So it was, given the information that we had at the time, it was a forecast that was based on actuals given at that point, which again, are a year in advance.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding this?
I have one question.
Amy, go ahead.
Director Fredrickson, you shared the, it was off 1.5%. What is the variance that, what is an expected variance?
So there is an organization called the Council of Great City Schools that has the top, I believe, 100 largest school districts in the country. We're obviously not one of those. But they do have, every year they report a KPI report, which is key performance indicators. And one of their KPIs is variances of budget versus actual. And if you are under 2.5%, they consider that fairly spot-on. There are variances from a half a percent to 5%. I think if you go more than 5%, then there probably needs to be an explanation.
Anything else regarding this document?
The other report that basically is the same information, just in a different format, is the projection by object code rather than have the programs like the administration district support. It just lists the, it's the same dollar amounts, it's just categorized it by salaries, purchased services, supplies, capital miscellaneous, and then our debt service. So again, it's just a different way if you want to see how much we spend in salaries versus the amounts broken out by program code. I just gave you another piece of information that you can kind of compare. And then I've also included in there just a reminder of what the board-approved budget reductions were, how we got to the $4.1 million. And then as we look at that detailed allocation, that hasn't changed since the last one that we had. It breaks out the departments and the school allocations. You can see that we spend $95 million in schools. There is, this spreadsheet shows about $27 million in departments, but that is including transportation, utilities at schools, health service, and I think Woolridge Retreat is in there, too. So while they're listed under department, it's supporting the schools. So on the 9th of June, the budget that we'll be asking you to approve is a revenue of $123.2 million and expenses of $123.2 million.
Mary?
Director Fredrickson, considering that the, our state government hasn't yet decided on a final education bill, I assume they're still pretty far apart unless some brand-new news came through today, which I don't think it did. Today was the deadline, I believe. I assume you're putting in maybe a variance on, or at least going to inform us of what you believe may be a change after we do approve the 25-26.
Yeah, if there's any significant changes, then we will certainly do an amended budget at some point. I really don't know how long it's going to take them to get through a special session. There are some issues they're pretty far apart on. But we will certainly keep the board informed and if we need to make an adjustment, we will certainly have a resolution to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding this topic? Okay. Thank you, Director Fredrickson. Moving on to the enrollment update.
Well, the enrollment update, oh, I should just also mention that the, all of the financial from April are just in here because it's been a while since they weren't ready for the last board meeting. So we're adding them here. They will also show up on the next board meeting in the consent agenda and it'll be two months for you to approve then. So just for your situational awareness, there, I did include all of the financial packet that you usually get. The enrollment report, as of the beginning of May, we were at, for K-12 enrollment, about 8601, which is 25 more than we had at the same time last year, but 18 fewer than we had on October 1st. So it's been very consistent. If you look at the kindergarten enrollment, as of May 9th, we have 499 students. There were 103 of those are open enrolled. That was a question that was asked. And four of them are open enrolled at Westwood. So we're looking pretty consistent with the last five years. If we projected out, we're still a little less than we had last year. But again, it's been pretty consistent with what we're seeing.
Questions around the enrollment update?
Can you repeat the, I'm sorry, can you repeat the open-enroll numbers?
There are 103 kindergartners open enrolled of that 499, and four of them are open enrolled at Westwood.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Director Fredrickson. How about we take five before we move into the school closure discussion, because that might take a little bit of time. So why don't we reconvene at 7:05?